Please rise to the occasion of Pastor Phil Hill, Mr. Leo, one of the children of children.
Children of God. Let us pray. Greed and sustain your God, we give you thanks for giving us life and a planet that continues works by your grace to sustain us day by day. Make us mindful of how dependent we are on your abiding presence as we see the work of your hand through nature. Remind us to seek to be obedient to your charge to care for what you've given us and to share the abundance of your providential hand so no one will be without food to eat or protection shelter or livelihood in which they can be co-creators with you of a better community. Grant those here tonight in positions of responsibility and attitude of Godly stewardship to this community as they make decisions that affect the life of all persons under their jurisdiction. May your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are very honored tonight to have with us Representative Susan Kenworth Neighborhood through Martha Astley and Cassie Dillon here who are going to make a presentation of the quilt. And I believe we have three representatives. We have three. Kelly Walker, okay.
In March 2012, the following letter went out from all to all members of the Kenworth Neighborhood Association. Dear friends and neighbors, the nature of this letter is to inform you of some exciting news from the Kenworth Neighborhood. This spring, we will begin to assemble a Kenworth Neighborhood themed quilt. The quilt would represent the diversity that has come to make Kenworth such a unique and special neighborhood. The quilt will be made up of many different and personal swatches of cloth from our neighbors. We are urging you, your participation in this great community effort. This will be a great opportunity to get to know our neighbors on a more personal level. We are looking for people who can help do the quilting, our folks who will donate a special swatch of fabric that we will incorporate into the design of the quilt. You could even join us for fellowship if you'd like. In addition, we hope to have this project up and running in time for the Zara Baker Playground in mid-April. It should be noticed that the swatches are any size, but it would be helpful if they are close to eight by 10 inches square. I'm Martha Astley, a part of the committee. Jeanette Killian is not here tonight, I don't think. And Kelly Walker is on that committee. We had a few meetings and we got the swatches, but the project was slow to get off the ground. We did get the swatches cut, but not much else was done. Timings may have played a factor. In October, my niece, who is a professional quilter from Tennessee, was visiting and she could see that the possibility than our effort. She pinned together a sample and displayed it at our Neighborhood Meeting in October. Everyone liked it, but it was only pinned together. In January, a church member was visiting me and was telling me, and I was telling her her struggle, and she said she knew of someone who might be able to help. Not sure, but give her a call. She came, yes, and she put it together. At this point, I knew that we would have a hard time having a hand quilted. Did she know someone who would machine quilt it for us? Mary Ann to the rescue again. She took three members of our neighborhood to a quilter in Alexander County, and we learned that she would do it for free if we didn't need it by the way. Finally, in July, Mary Ann called me again to say that she had the quilt and it was beautiful, but it needed a binding. She then said, "I am not a member of your neighborhood, but I like what you are trying to do and I would like to be a part of it. May I put the binding on?" Guess what my answer to her was? The quilt has had a journey. All the swatches came from Kenworth, the design from Tennessee, the quilting from Alexander County, and the finishing touches from northwest Hickory. I would like to show it to you now.
Turn it around that way. That'll be good. Okay.
Unfortunately, we were not able to use all the swatches, so you know where you can find some. And also, what was the other thing? The police badges could not be put on it because the quilter could not do that, so they will add those later. What's next for our quilt? It will be on display at our Neighborhood Block Party in September at the Zara Baker Playground, and after that, it will probably be on the block. Thank you.
Mr. Leo and Mr. Mike are on their way on vacations with their children and grandchildren. Mr. Leo is a child, no grandchildren. We have a motion to approve the met. First, we have persons requested to be heard, and we have three people who've requested to be heard, starting with Jim Starchi.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, council members. I am Jim Starchi. I was the originating chairman of the Home Restoration Stand Down Program. We started in 2011. We had stand downs in 2012 and '13, and both of the stand downs, we helped over approximately 200 homeless and needy veterans. We also, both years, we saw 57 homeless people who had dental problems, extensive dental problems. Some of the, this past year, some of the dentists that devoted their time and efforts to extract up to 11 and 12 teeth, and some people, their teeth are so bad. Also, with the Veterans Hub and Veterans, I'm one of the founding members of that group. We have, since that time, about three years ago, we have brought out of the woods, so to speak, out of tents, put about seven people into apartments. These were homeless people. They're in apartments now. They're functioning. Also, we have put about 15 people into education classes, through CBCC technical courses. Some of them are in school now, some are waiting for the next class to start. We have about 12 or 13 people that we have taken to different meetings, presentations we have done, and we have gotten them, they are now reductive members of society, living in homes and stuff like this rather than in the tents. And this system has been supported by Grace House. We have offices there, we do our meetings there, we do counseling there for the homeless and the needy veterans. I think it's very important to the community that the Grace House continues functioning as it is. There may be a few small things that need to be changed around with it, but as far as the Grace House function with a homeless, especially with the homeless veterans, it has been really a blessing to us. And so, I just like to have that information out, knowing some of the things that the Grace House does. Thank you very much.
I understand the applause, but I have to ask you, let's not repeat that because we have a, we have a position here that we don't have chairing and chairing, that was not chairing or jerry necessarily, but we have to, we pretty much have to enforce that or we're going to end up with, in some cases, with groups trying to outdo each other, and that's all we want to do. But I agree with you, Jim Starchi is going to be a big party guy, I don't think he should. So I'll attempt to do applause, but I'm glad I didn't. Roger Cornet.
I'm honored to be here, Mayor and Council. I don't have a prepared speech. I'm doing it off the cuff, so to speak, tonight. I just found out about this yesterday. My name is Roger Cornet. I'm director of Open Door Homeless Relief Program. We are a 501(c) nonprofit. We work through a Baptist church on Springfield. I have an office there, and we're unique in our ministry in that we, we're the only ministry that goes out to the camps, and I'm the only person that does that. And I have taken my American Legion liaison, who is here tonight and will be speaking shortly too, and some of the other folks in here out to camps. I've taken business groups, the Pogly Tour last year, if you remember this, Camps in Hickory, in the bus from Raleigh, including the esteemed Professor Nichols, who's director of Pogly, the state of North Carolina. And he was kind enough to come out during this recent storm we had this past winter and went to the camp's with him, spent the day. Now, we went through snow, ice, everything, had to put the four-wheel drive to get some of these areas. We do have a homeless problem, and a lot of people don't like to recognize it, but that's my job to try to do these presentations, speak at groups, things of that nature, to let them know what's really going on. And if you should like me to present at some future time or even tonight, I have posters, 20 by 30 posters of camps five minutes away from here, recent pictures done by a photojournalist. We've been honored in Charlotte Observatory to get a five-month investigation into our program when they heard we were doing it, when I flew to the camps. A lot of people are afraid to do this, and I just don't have an actual fear about it. I love these people, and I found out that they're just like us. And what I like to tell most people, and I'm not going to be wordy in this speech, is we've got 30 percent of these people is down and out of luck, bad luck, 30 percent mental issues. These are the toughest, the mental health issues there. And we have people in here that deal with it, we have a lot of people that deal with that type of thing, and I love these people. And I love our homeless friends that have these mental issues too, but I'm lost in, in really dealing with what's going on with some of them. And then the other 30 percent are addiction issues, as you well know, and you hear a lot about those. They're more standout, and we have law enforcement issues. And I have an officer here tonight, I'm honored, that he comes after our program, and everybody loves him, the homeless people have really grown attached to him, he's been a real asset to our program. We operate every two weeks at Grace House, so I'd like to plug the Grace House students, say that they do a wonderful job here, and they allowed us to come in, they invited us over, they have an open area, or limousines used to be parked, as all of you well know, used to be a funeral home. And we operate there, we bring new snacks out, we have fellowship with them. I help to do the point in time count for United Way, so I'm plugged into all these organizations. I do it quietly in the background. If anybody needs some information on what's going on in the homeless community, I'd be glad to address it, either people in the audience, media, or city council at any time in the future. I just ask you, please reach out with love in your heart, because we're trying to bring, first of all, comfort to these people.
Three minutes.
Okay. Comfort, housing in the form of tents, that's all we can offer at this point, there's nothing else, and love, and bring joy back into their lives. Thank you very much.
Julie Walker, the Complimentary Connection.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to speak. I am Julie Walker. I am the program director for the Complimentary Connection, and within our treatment facility, we actually run outpatient treatment for people that have addiction issues. We run a full array of outpatient treatment for substance abuse, everything from assessment to regular outpatient intensive. We also have state and federal contracts to where we have money available to clients that don't have insurance-type programs, and we're partnered with the managed care organizations. We also are partnered with the other providers within the managed care organizations like Catawba Valley Behavioral Health Care, Family Net, Department of Social Services. We've actually been in operation for around 18 years, and we've actually grown quite extensively with our service array, but one of our standing philosophies within what we do as an agency and business is that we can't do everything under our umbrella of services, even for those that have the addiction issues. We truly have to collaborate in reference to securing appropriate resources for clients in need, and so that's always been our philosophy, and so we do have strong partnerships in reference to helping guide consumers within our county that actually suffer from addiction and mental health issues, because there's actually a high population of people within communities that have what they call co-occurring disorders, and they need treatment between mental health and substance abuse. Another area of our agency is we also run employment programs, employment and training programs, and we've been doing this actually since back in 2007, 2008, and it's through federal funds, Workforce Investment Act, we're heavily attached to the job link. But through our employment and training services, basically what we're heading in it has to do with the economic factor and some of the changes our nation has made through is that homelessness is now an epidemic within our nation, and you can see it here in Catawba County, it's quite evident. But one thing that I'm proud of in reference to Catawba County is that we are very resource-guided, and we tend to pull together and do collaborate to figure out how can we work with varied populations in need. One thing that was missing in reference to serving homelessness, and a lot of them do have some addiction as well as mental health, some of them again are just in a situation where they've lost their income and just have not been able to secure the right path in order to sustain, you know, a true lifestyle that they so desire, but all of that's need element. So basically, Grace House has actually offered one of the barriers that had been missing is a day program to where providers can come together, resources can come together and provide services. We currently have a full-time clinician over there that works with them through peer support and counseling. We also transport them to and from treatment programs. We are partnered with the other affiliates there at Grace House. So I'm here just to encourage stronger partnerships through Grace House and also to applaud Grace House for getting this up and running, and I'm just actually encouraging us to continue the sustainability of this program. Homelessness is here, and you know, it's better for us to work together to actually work with these individuals, and it's easier to do that if they are in a location to where we can work with them instead of them being scattered out between the county and it's hard for them to access service. But again, thank you, and again, we are really commending Grace House and the sustainability efforts of that program. Thank you.
Do you want to say something? Appreciate those comments. Some of you may be wondering why, and I'm sort of wondering why we had these comments tonight, although they were very informative and timely, I'm sure. But there's no question that tremendous services were provided to a lot of deserving people, and there have been a lot of success stories. At the same time, we have heard, and we have to deal with this too, issues concerning people who are not behaving the way that you all would like them to behave in our downtown Earth. And so, I don't know if any plans have been made, I think it'd be good for us to sit down with Astro Jack and Jim and Complimentary Connection and the other folks, and talk about what we can do to help make this thing work better for everyone. And I think that's what these comments were about. I appreciate the respectful comments. I appreciate the, you know, last week, we had, we had kind of a spectacle here, I just want everyone here to know, it was here last week. We are not going to tolerate that from now until the election. We don't take that on when we become public service. It will not be about it here. Someone else someday may tolerate that, but it won't be about it here until after this election, I can assure you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. McCollum is actually on the agenda under a person's request, if I could be heard.
Astro Jack, I'm sorry.
He had submitted on Friday, so relax.
Everybody told my story, so I didn't. It was nice I got that signal back and hear all my... Yeah, I just wanted to briefly address the issue, and I was going to do a little history about Grace House, but we don't have a lot of time, but Grace House came about because of a need we saw in the committee. There was a tremendous gap in our services in the committee, and that was that there was nothing for people during the daytime. So they were getting in trouble down on the square and other places because they had no place to go. Coldest temperatures, the worst heat in the summer, they were standing on street corners. And so, that's how Grace House came about. We recently moved to the Hickory Funeral Home because it was a bigger facility, because we had more services we could offer, so we needed a larger facility. And we offer, I gave you all a sheet there, a little brochure on what we do, there are a tremendous amount of things that we're doing now. Right now, our newest program is the SORT program, which helps people obtain their disability. Many people have been eligible, meet criteria for disability for years, were not able to do that, didn't know how, didn't have the resources, and so we are able to help them do that. It's been a tremendous success. We get people with a disability in about four months, which is faster than any other services can provide in another agency. And we are very connected with other services. One of the things that happens at Grace House, a lot of people don't know, they say, "What happens there?" Well, we get people connected with other services. Our motto is that we don't expect you to live through change before you come to Grace House. We're going to love you as you make changes. And so, we try to bring people in without a lot of expectations, try to help them make changes once they learn to trust and know that we are there to care for them. And so, we do want to meet with city officials and with some of the neighbors that we share in the neighborhood, so that people will have a better understanding of what we do, that we're not just, people don't just hang out there and smoke cigarettes and sell sodas, you know, that there is a purpose and a reason for why they're there and things are happening. A lot of success stories we could tell you about, people getting in, moving from homelessness into apartments, going to halfway houses. We've probably gotten in the last couple of years, 22 people into inpatient substance abuse treatment. I know of 63, at least 63 people we got connected with mental health services. Lots of good things happening, and so we do want to work with our neighbors and the people downtown to see what we can do to work together as a team. I believe that the way things happen, successful things, is through teamwork and through community action. So we are part of the community, we want to work with the community, we, just like everyone else, want the best for the city of Hickory. And so, we thought it was time for us to come and speak to the council and the mayor and to explain what really, you know, really happens there, that it's not just hanging out, that things really happen there. So we have a lot of things, a lot of services that we, people don't know about. We help people get their ID, we help them with medications. People say, "Well, they have a shelter they can go to at night," but, and certainly not criticizing the cell, they're a wonderful group, but they, if you, not everyone's able to go there, and so, I kind of stop it. But just if you look at those brochures, you get a better understanding of all the kinds of activities that happen there. And I would like to put my first beset upon you, so, thank you.
We will do that. Thank you, sir. Now, motion to approve the met. Motion by Mrs. Fox, second by Mr. Patton. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That is your answer. Any items to be moved from the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Do we have a motion to reaffirm and ratify on second, please?
No.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's clear. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Gass, second by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion clear. Love it here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On our first public hearing on the public hearing this evening, I tell you a reselling petition about property belonging to 28th Street Southeast, and I'll ask each county to be the city's principal planner, the primary voting, to present that item to council clerk to the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Wright, I'm Mr. McCollum. Tonight for you is a reselling petition, first in back of town. This petition is located by Charles Dick, who is a resident family LLC. This particular zoning, probably six parcels total, and about 3.2, 3.32 acres, located on 28th Street, and I think we, to give you some bearings of order right here, this is your furniture, CBCC here, Ventas Steel, and this will be low common proof, probably 70 years, people are owed here. Request is to read on the property currently from its current zone, the arrears eventual to C3 Regional Commercial. You can see southernmost property, approximately half of its current zone, C3 Regional Commercial, while approximately half of it is on residential, plus remaining these blocks outlined in the bulk area when the hash of the national property consideration is here. See this respect to the existing zoning around it, pretty much all the zoning around the particular areas on Regional Commercial. Stuff for this area, which is a residential neighborhood, well, it has another house and as well as some parts of this area which are vacant and a partial station. And I fast forward one more slide, and this basically shows our future land use plan, which is contained in our introductory, it's a comprehensive plan, and you can see the entire area, special regional commercial. That was reviewed and live requirements, we're containing our development, having our plans for consistency with our general plan and as far as the rezonance, and the foundation of these general standards. Our planning commission held a public hearing in respect to consideration of this reselling petition on June 26th. At that hearing, Representatives for RNC LLC spoke in favor of addition, others spoke in opposition of addition. That's a conclusion of the hearing, the planning commission deemed the question to be consistent with our future land use plan and recommended this petition be approved by the city council. And with that, I will close, and answering questions, council may have some questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Governor. Uh, we will have a public hearing to discuss this issue and during this public hearing, we allow, uh, first, the people who like to speak against the proposal to address the question, and then people who like to speak for it, and then we allow, we vote. We vote a five minute period. The initial, uh, time allocation, we ask to 15 minutes, to be divided as, as the speakers see fit, but we ask you to consider the 15 minute limit. With that, I will throw the public hearing open and call on first the two people who signed up to speak against this proposal. First on the list is Roger Cornett.
Okay, uh, city councilor, mayor, I think there's some confusion, I think, in the audience out here about this particular rezoning. We were looking at the rezoning issues involving the Grace House downtown. So is that going to be addressed at this meeting tonight? Okay, for some reason, that's, uh, there's a bit of confusion in the community. I think there's a lot of people in here right now that thought there was going to be a rezoning request for the Grace House property, property downtown. So I don't know how this came about or what happened.
Sometimes I'm the last one to die, and I seem to say most of everything.
Okay, then I think that clears up some of the confusion we have in the audience. A lot of, a lot of people involved, the homelessness and some of the organizations such as mine and people that are involved, be it Pastor Jack and, and Men Hill, homelessness, everything, everything's tied in together. And we were all under the impression this was a rezoning issue for the Grace House property. So undoubtedly something, somehow something's looked out wrong somewhere. We want to apologize for that.
I don't know how that works, though.
Yeah, and we appreciate that you're listening to what we had to say about that. And we'd like to address the council again some future time with presentations and we'll keep it, again, we won't be worried about it, we'll keep it short this week. We have a lot of fine people in here that I've met in the last three years since I've been doing this. And my organization's real quiet, as I said earlier, and low key, but these people are a lot of movers and shakers and homelessness, vision. Some of them you've heard tonight, some of you haven't. So I would appreciate, uh, you know, some focus in the future on this issue. And we apologize for the miscommunications, whatever happened.
Thank you for your comments, your brevity and your good spirit. Levi Helpin, were you confused today?
Yes, he was. We have something sweet to say there.
Mr. Mayor, I was under the same impression that Roger was, but I apologize, but I do have something I'd like to present to you and the council. It's a petition to keep Grace House open. It's, uh, 149 signatures. Most of them come from the American Legion, if I could, who did I, I'm going to just list.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to, uh, read you a little comment about what you pledged, what you pledged to the legions, 'cause I figure some of you don't even know what the words mean.
Let's do this. I'm going to, I'm going to, how do I just, uh, recess from the public hearing?
Well, I think the, the best thing to do is to ask him to stand down for a moment, finish the public hearing, and after that, make a motion to hear something small on the agenda.
Mr. Helpin had signed up, so that's okay. Let's finish the public hearing.
Okay.
And then we'll go from there.
Okay, so you want me to wait?
We're going to ask you to sit down right there.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh, now I'm going to prepare the public hearing and call on those who would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? We got Mr. Charles Dixon, signed up today.
I am Mr. Charles Dixon, and I'm here for the Rosewood, uh, family partnership, supporting the rezoning. First, I'd like to say I'm so grateful that all of these people here are not, here opposing what I'm saying. I'd like to feel, make the slides go and, uh, ask the producer to choose that one. Let me first say that, uh, my client is the Rosewood Family Partnership and the property that's involved here is owned by them. The company is C. Rosewood Uphosting Company, that is also owned by the Rosewood, uh, family, but the property that we're talking about is to be, is the Rosewood Family Partnership. But let me tell you just briefly about the Rosewood Uphosting Company. It was formed in 1958 in Brookford, it moved to this site in 1960, so it's been there, uh, I believe, for 53 years. And it's on the north side of Highway 70, it's just east of 28th Street Southeast. Uh, the reason that this matter is involved here is that they are trying to expand their business and, uh, they have, are in the process of adding, uh, 42,000 square feet of, of manufacturing space. It's 21,000 feet on two floors. Uh, they hope after that is complete, they'll have a more efficient operation, but also that they'll be able to add 15 to 20, uh, new employees. Uh, move, move the next slide. I, I wanted to show that, uh, you see the, the small things, the small pieces to the left side of 28th Street. Uh, most of that is owned by the family partnership. The northernmost piece is owned by residents, Mr. Yang. To the east, that's in the brown, is its own R3. And to the south of that is where the, um, the factory's located, just south of 20th, uh, 17th Avenue and east of 28th Street. And let me, uh, also explain to you what will happen after the rezoning. The purpose of the rezoning is the property on the west side of 28th Street is to make it possible to extend the employee parking. The use of the factory site, however, is not going to be changed except to extend it to the east. And when the trucks, uh, come into the factory in the future, most of them will come in off of, uh, Highway 70 and have actually entered on the east side of the property. Uh, they have gotten a building permit, building permit to add the factory, but they also got a highway permit to permit an entrance and exit on the east side of the property. So the trucks actually will come into the plant and leave the plant. Down on Highway, uh, 70 will not go through the neighborhood, will not affect the neighborhood. Uh, if, however, a truck did need to come home from the west side, they wouldn't go down 27th Avenue, which is only partially open, it is not open all the way to the back of the factory, it actually would enter the property on the property site itself. It's fenced in, a wave on the factory site, and the trucks would come off 28th Street if they came in from the west, turn it to the east and be entirely on the, uh, the plant site. It would not be in the neighborhood. Uh, some of the property owners that we were able to contact are Mr. Yang, who does occupy the northernmost property, and he was in favor of the rezoning. Uh, Bill Burton and his company owns all the property to the west of the property that's to be rezoned, and he's in favor of the rezoning. And the third person we were able to contact is Jerry Twigs, who is representative of, of a company called Third, uh, Third Gate. And it's the darker brown to the north side, and, uh, he has, uh, his company has a permit to build a large, uh, dupe, uh, large residential development, and he also was in favor of the rezoning. So we've tried to contact some of the neighbors who are not ever there, so a lot of the houses over there are actually owned by the Rosewood Family Partnership. But with the, uh, way the plan is for the use of the property and the way the, uh, minimum impound on the area by additional traffic, I don't think this use is going to in any way depreciate the neighborhood. And we argue and suggest and ask that you approve the rezoning, which was approved unanimously by the planning board and then we've been able to conversation through the change in the rezoning at the planning board meeting. Thank you very much.
I throw the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion. Thank you. Motion by Mrs. Fox, second by Mr. Gass, all in favor, please say aye. That's your vote. Love recovery update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call initially on, uh, this Karen Yowsey, who's the emergency manager for, uh, out of county, and ask her to present information that is relevant to our citizens about how those who have received damage on their private property, uh, processes that are in place for them to, uh, seek support. And then after Ms. Yowsey's presentation, if you all have questions of her specific to that and being sensitive to her time, uh, we'll, we'll let her go if that's okay. And then we'll turn over Chuck Ganson, who's going to more to public infrastructure issues for the city community. Ms. Yowsey?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilwoman, Mr. Mayor. I really wish that there was not a reason for me to be here talking to you tonight about what's happened to our community. Um, but unfortunately, on Saturday, July 27th, we had an extensive rainfall across the county that severely affected Hickory and some of the surrounding communities. Um, and some of the staff here in Hickory asked me if I would give a little overview and tell you about what the citizens here in Hickory can expect in the days going forward and the kinds of things that we're putting into place right now. Uh, just to give you a little perspective on where we are, the upper left-hand picture is the morning of Saturday, July 27th. Um, that's Catawba County. The kind of deep purple kind of color there in the middle represents somewhere between 10 and 15 inches of rain that started about 5:30 in the morning and ended about 11 o'clock in the morning. That came on top of the right-hand lower picture there. That is from January to now, and you've seen that exact same area, it was 20 inches over normal for this time of year. So it's set up for kind of the perfect storm on Saturday morning, already incredibly saturated soil and very heavy rainfall. Just a few pictures to, to kind of go through for you, and I started with this one because there was a point of about 8:30 or 9:00 in the morning when we had more than 12 active swiftwater rescues going on in Catawba County at the same time, some of which were here in Hickory. And the rear of that day are the Hickory Fire Department and Hickory Police Department and the efforts they made to protect the citizens as this was unfolding. This is some of the, one of the swiftwater teams that was in place that day to try and rescue some people. What you don't see in this picture is a road, a bridge, and three homes that are just off of that mailbox that you see to the right because they're all underwater. This was about 7:30 or 8:00 in the morning on Saturday. Um, that is actually between, um, the southeast corner of Hickory and, um, and the mall, the Newton Conover, kind of where Hickory and Newton Conover all come together. But that's just typical of a lot of the, a lot of the places across the county. And again, some more pictures showing bridges and roads underwater, parking lots inundated, folks trying to drive through this water that unfortunately should not have been, which is what necessitated the swiftwater rescues that had to go on that morning. As of this morning at 8:00 in the morning, we had 840 homes registered as having had property damage. We have been able to assess 713 of those, um, as of last evening. We have assessment teams out again today. We have four destroyed, um, properties, eight, four with major damage, and major damage means they had more than 18 or 24 inches, depending on the type of structure it was, inside a living area. In other words, in your living room or in your bedroom. Um, we have 465 with minor damage. They may very well have had six or eight inches inside, depending on the type of structure that it was. And 161 other. And by other, I don't want to mean them at all. We've, during the assessment, did not find house damage, but we did find extensive property damage. Their driveway is gone, uh, the culvert over, that their driveway goes over is gone, the bridge that their driveway goes over is gone. Um, retaining walls at the back of the property have completely collapsed. So the others also have extensive damage, it's just not defined by the residential house damage that the first three sets of numbers are defining here. Excuse me. This is my favorite picture of all, because you can't, you can't look at 700, 800 homes damaged and think, well, you know, is that significant, until you look at the numbers of them on the, on the map there. And if we laid that, uh, precipitation graph back over that, you would see exactly that's where that purplish pink blob was on the morning of July 27th. Some examples of some of the, the damage that people residentially are dealing with. This actually is a culvert that collapsed, you can see somebody's driveway coming in there. There are a number of homes that are still cut off from being able to use their vehicles or come and go comfortably or easily from their homes because their driveway or private road has been cut off. This is a retaining wall at the back of somebody's property that has collapsed. This is actually, um, not too far from here in Hickory. Trees that, in the saturated soil, just fell over, crashing on the back of somebody's property, owned to their house. Water damage. Henry in the picture there is about six feet tall, so you can do the rest of the calculation there and see how high the water was at this particular home. And again, um, more substantiation of the amount of water that was in people's homes. Some of these houses we have found, not because people reported their damage, but because in driving by, we saw their belongings strung out on the front lawn as they were trying to drive them down, and our assessment teams have stopped and said, you know, hey, can we talk to you about your, about your situation? There are some homeowners that have been blessed enough to be able to start taking out wallboard and taking up flooring and working on drying the, um, inner structures of the walls. The wallboard really should not be put up until those have been dried for a couple of weeks, um, otherwise you're just setting them up for additional mold if it's not appropriately Those are commercial, um, dehumidifiers sitting there that are drying this house. So what we've done so far as county, um, in coordination with municipalities that are affected, on Monday, July 29th, the first thing we did was send an official request to the state of North Carolina for a damage assessment of residential property. In other words, that's the first step for getting individual assistance, um, for homeowners, for residents that are affected by the disaster on personal or, you know, whatever. We sent that to North Carolina Emergency Management. They sent the two teams, um, a few days later. Those teams toured across Catawba County, looked at all the damage, um, but they were focused on the residential damage. And, um, the results of that evaluation showed that we met the minimum criteria for a Small Business Administration, um, declaration, which is a federal, uh, assistance program that comes along in partnership with some state assistance. On August 1st, we got the notification that we met that threshold, which we immediately turned back around and asked the governor to add on, um, to that request, one for type one individual assistance, um, which is in the governor's purview to grant to Catawba County and municipalities. That comes after Small Business Administration, so if you don't get Small Business Administration declaration, you don't get a type one declaration. But the type one is a second declaration. It provides temporary housing, it provides money to citizens to replace belongings, um, such as bedding, clothing, um, furniture. It helps them replace vehicles, which there's an untold number of vehicles that folks need to replace or have repaired. It can help with medical and dental expenses related to the disaster. And it helps people to, um, obtain the first year of flood insurance on their property. And it helps people to obtain the first year of flood insurance on their property, which is a good thing. We're not a highly insured flood insurance county. We don't have a lot of flood history. We are participatory as far as the flood insurance program goes, but encouraging folks to have flood insurance will help. However, even if you have flood insurance, it almost never covers 100% of a person's loss in a, in a wild situation like this. On August 2nd, we requested on behalf of the city of Conover, a public assistance damage assessment. That is for the bridges, roads, infrastructure damage that the municipalities have suffered. August 5th, we did the same thing for you all here in the city of Hickory. Those are both formal requests. We have heard that the public assistance damage assessment is going to occur on Thursday and Friday in the county. The state public assistance officials have told us that they're not sure yet whether we're going to qualify for federal declaration for public assistance for work on infrastructure or state-level declaration. So they're going to tour the damage, make their assessment, and then figure it out after they've seen everything. This afternoon, we were notified by the governor's office and by the U.S. Small Business Administration in Washington that Catawba County and the continuous counties were approved for small business administration loans to individuals. Residents are going to be able to apply for those starting on August 8th at noon. The center has been set up at the Catawba County Agricultural Resources Center in Newton. Transportation is available regardless of where you live in the county through greenway public transportation. We've talked to them a number of times and got that set up. Residents just have to call a number and they're on the screen to arrange for transportation if they don't have a way to get to the agricultural resources. Even though we've gotten that Small Business Administration loan, we remain hopeful about the governor declaring Catawba County a safe disaster area and getting that type one individual assistance. I'm hoping that we'll hear that tomorrow so that we can do what's best for everybody all in one, one good fell's sweep with that. The other arm of this that, that we're working across the county is a flood assistance partnership. This is a group of nonprofit volunteer faith-based organizations that have banded together and say, we want to wrap our arms around the citizens here. And you will see names that you know on there. And they have been working hard since last Friday. Things available for folks that need help removing belongings from their homes, tearing down walls, taking up floors, dehumidifying, treating mold, abating mold, mental health referrals, help with medical concerns and issues, food, clothing, whatever it is, this partnership is ready to address it. A hotline opened over the weekend that folks can call. There's also a web registration link that people can register. And then the partnership will begin addressing their needs and, and working with them, kind of in a case management type structure to, to put that out there. And certainly, if there are other groups and organizations that wish to join in wrapping arms around the citizens, we encourage them to get ahold of Catawba County United Way. They're kind of in process of sending any volunteers or groups that want to assist in this, this flood recovery process with the citizens. And the final thing I want to say is thank you to the city of Hickory. A special thank you to the staff. It has been a team effort across the county, but the city of Hickory staff has been there the whole way and it's been a joy to work with them. I sadly have a few of their phone numbers totally memorized now. Hope that I don't have to use them much on a regular basis, but I do know that when I call them, it's an instant, yes, what do you need? And that's a wonderful, wonderful feeling and you should be very, very proud of the staff.
Any questions in Ms. Yowsey's voice?
Is there anything we can do to help get the governor to defer?
Well, I'm certainly not going to discourage you from contacting your governor in support of that.
We don't want to get through to him. We probably don't want to get through to Anthony Wells or Austin Aller and Mr. Fisher and some others. I think we, I encourage all of you to do it and I'm going to try to do it in a minute.
Hopefully, he'll do the right thing, maybe a little pushing. I, I think the numbers are there. I think the documentation is there. I know certainly when, when people see the, the photos and, and if you've had the opportunity to tour any of the area, you see it and it's just incredible.
Well, he came here right away when the damage was still evident.
He did. Yeah. Unfortunately, he didn't spend a lot of time boots on the ground in the county. And, and so he was not able to see a lot of the damage. Hopefully, through the media and other avenues, he's had some opportunities to see some of the damage. It is tremendous. And the, the reports that we're getting from the public services people and the North Carolina Department of Transportation and those kinds of things are, we're not talking a few days on some of these projects. We're talking weeks, months, and in some, one, two, three years to restore some of, some of the issues. And I know some of the families are suffering that same devastation personally.
At this point, I'll call on the city's public services director, Mr. Chuck Gansman. I know he's going to tag the chief acting and chief caller and kind of present the, the issues that the city of Hickory has in terms of public events.
Mayor, Mayor, members of council, first off, I know on behalf of the, the rest of us standing on this, a thank you to Karen, don't, don't let her kid, you keep doing the young man job here. The numbers, a thousand-year storm, a 1,200-year storm, when they get that big, it doesn't really matter. Another way to say that is we had a fifth of our annual rainfall in about a six-hour period. And like Karen said, we already were saturated. So it was all, all run out, 100% of it. We're going to bounce up and down on you. I'm going to do a little talking. Police chief acting and police chief caller are going to, going to fall in and we're going to go back and forth a little bit. I'm going to start with a, a little bit of a timeframe. Obviously, July 27th is the Saturday when this started and again, our numbers, our phones start ringing that morning about daylight or so. Before the morning was over, we had, we had about 30-some people from our public services staff in at various places, Public Works, Street Department, Main Line, Public Utilities. 11 o'clock, 11:30 timeframe, the state of emergency was cleared by the city of Hickory. 12:30, we set up essentially a, an emergency operation center of the city of Hickory here. And so that was staffed and information was coming to the field, to, to the group that was working here and the public information office and helping get the word, word out to the press. That, that EMC remained open, if you will, about 8:30 that night and sending information to, to council there and also information from the other cities and the county here. So that was a, again, a group parent communication back and forth and what was going on, that we were all, all in, looking for the same boat. Lot of, a lot of communication taking place in that timeframe. I'm actually let Chief Atkins jump in here and he's going to tell you, we're going to sort of walk you through the, some of the processes that that.
Mayor, members, councilors, members of the crowd. Sort of we give an overview of what police departments involved in, in this event was during that day. Kind of all started with our 911 center. The Hickory Police Department Communications Center and Secondary P-SAP, which is a 911 center where if you dial 911 in Catawba County, it goes to Catawba County Communications Center. That call is streamed very briefly to see if any police, fire, EMS. If you dial three, they'll dispatch police. First you'll dispatch fire, EMS, and they'll transfer the call to the comm center in Hickory and will dispatch the appropriate resources to the police side. Communication center is set up for a 24/7 operation. We staff our comm center as we see on this picture there. Usually a three, three-person staff during the, during the regular shifts, during peak shifts, it could go all the way up to four. And our minimum staffing level is at two. Something unique about the police department is that not only they take the 328-5551 calls or non-mercy numbers and also 911 calls, but they also take administrative calls after hours. If you dial our administrative line, it'll roll down to the comm center. Also, neat is they are the public services call taken backup. So after 3:00 PM on Monday through Friday, all the way up to the following morning, at 7:00 AM, if you call the public services number, it'll roll to the police department comm center. And then on Saturday and Sunday, we are the backup for 24-hour period for those. So needless to say, that morning, we wasn't prepared for all the calls. We were getting on the infrastructure, road closing, road, all, all different infrastructure failures that occurred, but those three individuals took those calls promptly got the information. Now, you're going to hear an example of about three or four calls that the, they handled that day. The key is you have to understand that you'll hear just a lot of matter-of-fact. Those folks are just getting the information at the back and go to, add as well as the back man and serve and we're getting the next call because they were overwhelmed with those calls coming in. Also, those calls coming in, they're calling out public services. So they're calling public services with that information. So you may, you may think that they're sound very matter-of-fact, but they are. That's what they have to do to get the next call. There's a whole lot of chit-chat going on with these communicators. Now, you're going to hear four calls and you'll hear some dead space there. We've redacted the callers' phone numbers. We've redacted their information, any, and any identifying information that you made here. So we're going to give this a shot, right?
Hickory 911, what's the, what's the address, your emergency?
Uh, I don't know if it's an emergency. I've never been in this situation, but it's a flood down at the bottom of our conflict and it's caused upon the water and I don't know what to do.
Okay, where do you live?
I live in. Apartment. Hickory, North Carolina.
Okay. We've had one call under, is any of the apartment underwater?
Not yet. I don't, I don't know if it's, it's going to be capable for it to go underwater though because it looks like it's coming. I don't know. I mean, I just, I'm, I'm getting nervous because I have never been in this situation.
Okay, we've had one call. What is your name in case we need to, to make contact back with you?
Okay, my name is. Do you see the cars upon the water?
And what's the phone number for you? All right, we're, we're calling somebody out there, okay? If anything gets to work or anything, you just call us back, okay? Okay, this is my team. Bye-bye.
Her boy's in trouble for property. Also, she's here before the light, her cell was light.
Hickory 911, what's the address, your emergency?
It looks to be at, it's actually flooding. We have, the road is covered with three or four feet of water. It looks like part of the road is washed away. It seems like I was smelling a little bit of sewer. There's trees leaning across the road. It looks like it is, I'm, I can't get close enough to tell, but I'm guessing it is washed out down into the street drains. It looks like it's washed the road out there. I would think we need to put some road closing signs up down through here.
Okay. And what's your name?
My name is.
And a phone number?
Well, it is, my home number is, but I'm out walking around looking at this fiasco.
Okay. We'll go, what's your name?
No one's called it in yet?
We've only had one other call.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We've only had one other call.
Oh, okay. So it's been called in, okay.
We'll send somebody out there, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think later on in the presentation, you'll actually see some of these calls that these folks are making. I think you're going to have actually where they are located.
Hickory 911, what's the address, your emergency?
It is at the intersection of 321 and Second Avenue where Ham's and the Exxon station is at. There's a sinkhole, there's a sinkhole developing on the, in the corner where the Exxon station is. It's not in the pavement yet, but it's the power pole that's right there in that corner. Half of the side of that power pole, there's a big sinkhole already developing. It's right there at the power pole. We were coming down through there, just happened to look over and see it and realize what was happening and I don't know if anybody else has reported it yet or not.
Okay. What's your name? And a phone number?
Well, you don't really have to call me back. I'm just reporting this.
Okay, it's just in case if they can't find it and they would need to contact you back. Okay, we'll get off, drop it on the way.
Okay, thank you.
Bye-bye.
The last one has our water erosion rate, roadways, good damage to infrastructure.
5911, where's your emergency?
Uh, yes, sir. I'm over your Grace Church Road at the end of Wesley Chapel and where this roof washed out this water line is busted. It's a huge water panel which way over here.
Uh, Grace, Grace Church Road?
Yeah, Grace Church Road at the end of Wesley Chapel.
Wesley Chapel, okay. The water line there?
Yeah, see the roof washed away this morning.
Okay.
The highway did and this water line, I told them it's going bust. Now it's busted and there's water going all down two yards.
Uh, sir, I'll get an officer chick on it.
They need to cut the water off or something.
Okay, I'll, I'll vouch for the cords.
Oh, it's washing more and more of the roadway.
Okay, uh, sir, I'll get, I'll let them know.
All right, thank you.
Sort of just to keep the comparison of the day, a normal Saturday on July 13th, which was two weeks prior to this event, and then compare it to the day of the event. On 13th, between 6:00 AM and 2:00 PM, we had 245 calls we processed, meaning that calls coming in, calls going out. And then the total between that 12-hour span was 425 calls per service. Event in the computer dispatch, that's when the telecommunications enter something in the, in our computer, the dispatch requires a, a response to an event, whether it be a traffic crash, whether it be direct traffic, whatever that may be. So on that Saturday, on July 13th, we had 65 between the same, 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM and then 1:19 on that 18-hour period. It pretty much went crazy that morning, doubled. As you see, 543 events in that, at 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM and then 743 in that 12-hour period. Enters into dispatch there again, 166 for that 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM and then for that Our police officer during that day, total 100 police calls per, per service for that 12-hour period, 77 were not related to weather, but 66 of those were the alarm calls were coming in and the, the electric being out, different things happening there. So you have water in roadway, you have traffic crashes. And the remainder... And the remainder of those calls were for officers going out, checking on roadways for public services, checking on, uh, directing traffic for those individuals to help, um, fire an EMS, uh, public services, keep where they need to be. So, that was our involvement in this event, and I think Chuck comes back up.
Hey, Tim. Uh, I'm gonna run you through some slides, but I want to talk just a minute before that. Um, yeah, again, I'm very proud of the way all of our crews worked together, uh, police fires, public services, um, and talking with folk chiefs. I think they feel the same, direct communication back and forth. As they were getting calls, they were sending them to us. We basically ended up manning, telephone at our shop just to receive calls from the police department. Uh, and then, of course, they were, they were going out of our shop to our crews and so forth. Going forward, we're gonna, we're gonna time frame, flop back and forth here a little bit too. But going forward, we do expect to find more problems, as sort of normal with a flood scenario. Some of these issues don't rear their head for a few weeks or months down the road. Uh, damage done, but it doesn't, doesn't really show itself. Uh, so, from, from that standpoint, Saturday and Sunday were really, most of our, our time was spending the emergency situation, trying to protect, uh, folks and the traveling public, keep them out of harm's way, get things closed down, uh, just stabilize the situation best we can, like, let mother nature, you're not gonna stop that situation. You just have to keep, keep people out of the way of it. And, uh, so we were, we were basically, that's pretty much the mode for, uh, most of Saturday and on in, on in the Sunday to some extent. At the, uh, at the same time, um, we have one subdivision cut off, bridge washed out, and they had about seven homes in there totally cut off. Uh, and we'll, we'll talk about that along the slides here a little bit later. But, uh, we jumped into a little different mode for that one, 'cause we really had to figure out how to get those people in and out and for themselves, or, uh, or, uh, emergency services. On, uh, Monday, uh, our public services crews, utilities and streets predominantly, set about going through and inspecting their systems, the water received. We today would look at what we had. Uh, since that time frame, we've been inspecting, uh, essentially all of our storm drain systems, which we essentially did this past spring. We do that annually anyway. This is a follow-up, 'cause if you have this kind of damage, it, it, again, uh, has a tendency to, to obviously blow things apart, stop things, uh, damage things, so you really gotta go out and look, look for that. And right now, we're up in the, in the two-hundred-and-fifty number of, of places that we have some type of repair or damage to. Um, some, some of those major, some, some not. We have about thirty-eight thousand storm drainage structures out there. That's boxes, pipes, uh, from segment to segments, and there's a lot. And that's, that's what's in public right of it. You heard Karen talk a little bit about the pub, the private side. What I'm talking about is essentially the public side, what, what's within the street driveway that the city's responsible for. Again, some of, some of those small ones, from what we put together and part of what we'll be helping when we meet with the, with the folks Friday, that Karen talked about, uh, we're probably, uh, well over half a million dollars on, on just those small ones added up together, and that's, that's not some of the ones that I'm talking about in the slideshow here. This is, uh, Rip said, with the shot Karen showed you, and knowing what she had. This is Twentieth Avenue Southeast. Those of you who've been down to, uh, our sludge compost facility in the past, uh, now, we have the past Sunbelt trucking, that's the road. Um, they're basically sitting in the edge of shooting right out of the windshield of the truck. Uh, and again, that was, uh, a little bit, a little bit later in the storm. So, that's, that's what some of the, some of the roadways you heard about and what they look like. That's, that's, there's curbing gutter and drainage and all that. And of course, in that kind of, that kind of rain, drainage, that new. All right, here's, here's the Windridge subdivision, one of, one of the, uh, probably our largest damage, uh, that we've got to wrestle with. The house that you see in the back, there's about seven houses back here. This is their only way in and out. Uh, this is still Saturday morning, uh, the rain pretty much stopped, but this is full of water. This is actually Snow Creek. Water's running, uh, right to the left in this picture. This is the bulkhead of the pipe that used to be in there. You can see the elevation of the road, sidewalk. This, uh, is a water line that essentially was washed away. Here's a, a little, little different picture, essentially the same thing. Here's your water line again. Uh, the yellow's the gas, these are, uh, power lines, telephone lines, power line on the other side. So, if anybody wanted to see what sort of a cross-section of a road system looked like, there, there it is. It's looking upstream just a little bit, and you sort of see the gas line again. This is during the, still during the event. See this little arcs right here? That's the pipe. This, this was the road elevation right, right across here. So, not only is this gone, but it's as wide as, as wide as what you see here. Here's what it looked like after the, uh, rain went down, uh, this is, this is Sunday or Monday. It's, uh, this is Monday, I believe. Um, here's the structure, and here again, you can see that little arc where the, the pipe had set in there, and, uh, this is moving downstream. This is the upstream, this is, uh, you can see power trucks in here discussing how to, uh, again, start getting some emergency temporary services back into these folks. Uh, utilities crews beginning to, to work on, uh, getting temporary water and sewer in. This is downstream. If, if you take this shot and you look to the right, if you will, that's what it looks like. So, all of that debris is just downstream a hundred feet or less. Uh, the creek normally runs right, right through here, and now it's sort of peeling off and coming around and coming back into itself. So, uh, kinda hard to see, but there's a piece of that water line that's, that's missing right there. This is just standing down near the creek here, giving some idea. This is about a twenty-foot, about twenty-foot cross here, to give some idea what size that hole is. Uh, this backdrop behind you would easily fit in. And so, that gives you some magnitude of what, what this size is. Again, power crews, we're gonna put some overhead to get the bridge across. Here's our utility crews, they're, this is just upstream of the failure. The bridge is washed out down here. They're, they're working on welding up the caisson pipe to, to basically bridge the, bridge the creek to run the temporary utilities across. Here's that pipe in place. Again, here's the upstream structure. Here they are, beginning to, uh, basically feed, feed the temporary, uh, water sewer and just take the gas through that caisson. Uh, this is, uh, again, working around the clock, if you will. This is, uh, obviously getting dark on, but you can see the, see the pipes beginning to go in place. And here's what it looks like, uh, sort of in, as an end product. Here's where you saw that backup working to start with, off the hill. Here's the pipe in place, and those other ones are inside that carrier pipe, if you will, uh, under the string, and it comes back up on, on the side I'm standing on here. While this was going on, uh, while this was going on, essentially all of these services, water, sewer, gas, power, telephone, was all back in place Tuesday afternoon. During the rain event, and shortly thereafter on Saturday, we knew, obviously, these folks were cut off. Um, engineering folks began contacting some property owners. They worked out an agreement with three property owners, some of which live in the subdivision, uh, essentially how to get a temporary road into these folks. So, Sunday morning at seven o'clock, this started. A little bit of grading taking place through the woods, if you will. A little more grading taking place through the woods, beginning the shape of a road, working in. We basically worked around the big trees and property lines to get in. Uh, beginning, you see, actually, that sort of opens up a little bit, that's, that's sort of back into the subdivision area. Just, just grading, uh, again, it's pretty, pretty curvy little street. It's about eight-hundred feet long, two, two, three football fields long. Uh, here's sort of where it ties in the back of one of the cul-de-sacs. And so, again, we had equipment, construction equipment, and access going in here even, even while in this stage. Next step was to get some fabric down, and again, this was Sunday morning, so everything was still soaking wet, but it had been, so we had to get some fabric and some large surf stone, uh, on this rip route down. A little, little better shot of that. That's what the size stone, that's the base layer of this, this material looks like. Uh, there's your A.B.C., your crusher run going on in on top of it. Sort of the evolution of the road through the woods, sort of more of the end product. And tie it into subdivision. So, essentially, that's what these people are using in, in and out of their subdivision now.
How, how long did it take us to build that road?
Uh, we had, we had equipment going in and out on Monday morning. We pretty much got it to dirt opened up stage Sunday night. Monday morning, we had, we were able to get some of our construction equipment in on the other side of, you know, this side of the creek. And, and again, some, some of that stone was going, essentially, everything was done by Tuesday. The power and roadwork, so I'm real, real pleased with what, what our guys accomplished.
What did they get ahead?
Basically, yeah, it was accessible, totally finished, but a little bit behind on that, but all good. The next set groups of slides are all over Hickory and some even outside of Hickory. Couple of them you, you probably heard a call of them. Uh, this is Pine Crest Drive, Top of Springs. What you have here is a road washout. This is, this is the curbing gutter, the line of curbing gutter. This white pipe is the water line, it's actually under the curbing gutter. Uh, and some of these, some of these calls, not only were our folks blocking the roads off, but we were trying to protect what infrastructure was there at the same time. So, this steel beam, we keep some of these in our backyard. Everybody's gotta have a little bit of a storage pile, and this, this is what we keep sometimes. Uh, you drop this beam off, you span, you span the, the washout, you strap the water line up, and, uh, folks stay together on it. So, that's, uh, again, a little, little different, little different look at the hole, but, uh, that water line got shut down for a little bit to get things in place, and so that water line's up and live and running, nobody's out of water. Everybody still has access, in this case, 'cause it's sort of a loop, loop road in there. Uh, here's, here's essentially, uh, storm drain pipe. This is a eighty-four-inch storm drain pipe, so, you know, it's something I walk through. Uh, she separated, can't really tell here, but, but it's separated right back, back here. This is looking downstream, so again, the creek itself, uh, uprooted debris. I'm, I'm pretty much standing right here on the edge, looking off downstream. Triple Creek, this is, uh, Sixth Street Northwest right here, uh, the new sidewalk that's out there. Uh, we have this kind of thing in most places, uh, something washed out and up to the next, next thing downstream to call it. In this case, it was the, uh, culverts at, uh, at Sixth Street. Uh, so, all of this week, we've been investigating and finding and looking and removing as much of this stuff as we can, uh, obviously getting ready for the next rainy day. So, that's, that's what we've been doing non-stop. This is, uh, Seventh Avenue Southwest. This is inside the pipe looking upstream. So, that's the inlet, I'm sorry, that's the inlet of the pipe. So, again, as this water came to it, came to the pipe systems, or even receded, some of this stuff, old dead wood in various places, it floated, got washed down to, to the inlets. And so, uh, again, this is an example of, this pipe's in good shape, it's just it's stopped up. This is being cleared, for example, but th, these are some of the things that we'll continue to find and look for. But that's, you know, ninety percent block right there. Uh, firing range bridge, this goes over to the police firing range. Couple of shots here. What, what's kinda hard to distinguish in this is, here's the creek level, and again, this was after the event. But if you see this debris up here, and there's debris in this steel truss system, the water level was up here. As it recedes, this is standing on the bridge looking down, and, and that looks like a long way down. It is a long way down. It's, it's twenty-five, thirty feet down. Uh, so that's, gives you some idea of how, how high, this is a narrow, steep little creek runs through here and, and river runs through here. This debris, again, uh, underneath the bridge, this has been pulled out, removed. A lot, a lot of that type of activity going on. Uh, the bridge has been inspected, it's safe, it's back open. A lot of mud and stuff on the, on the roadway's been removed. This is a, uh, eighteen-inch sewer line. There's a storm drain that runs from the top of the hill that comes down this way underneath this towards, towards the quarry. This sewer line is sort of in a little flat area that runs, just like you see on the page. This storm drain washed out, so you had a little bit of a slide, almost a little bit, you might think that was a little bit of a slide here. And when it did, it took this section of, of sewer line out. So, this is, uh, this is one of the calls that we received, uh, and I said one call, one of the calls we received from our own crews checking on some things. This was, uh, found, uh, Saturday afternoon. A little hard to see here, uh, but this is Sunday morning at about four or five o'clock. Uh, A.M., obviously. Uh, these are two power poles spanning that, they're laying across here, if you will. There's two power poles, this is a new piece of sewer line strapped in, and we're in the process of sealing this up. A little bit of sewer's still flowing right there, and then that's been sealed up. So, again, this is the temporary fix to put this hole back together and keep that sewer flowing.
Can you do, can you draw him on?
Farmer ingenuity on this one. The, uh, and, and again, I'm proud of our crews for getting things back, back and open and for all the, all the reasons they needed to. This one has been bid, it's actually under construction, and the repair is already taking place. Uh, they're working yesterday late this day. Uh, that one is about, round numbers, a fifty-five thousand dollar fix. Here's a driveway pipe, it's just happened to be the driveway pipe going into our Henry Four Quays Water Treatment Plant. Uh, it's pretty important to get our trucks in and out of there. This one's deep, off the bank, uh, twenty-plus feet down. Again, a lot of water came, came out. It sort of self-destructed. A couple of these joints started leaking, water running over top, and, and essentially came apart. Not a large pipe, not a ton of water, and much more of a situation. In this case, uh, this one, this one has been bid and is scheduled, same crews going from the sewer project on the last one over this one. This one's about a twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollar fix, 'cause of the debt of it. Somebody called in on the chief's, uh, line a minute ago and talked about water shooting everywhere. Well, there it is. This is, this is the one on Grace Church Road you heard. Uh, what you can't see is the road's washed out right here. Uh, here's a little different view of the same, same one. Here's the, here's the, uh, water line. In this case, it's, it's, uh, failed a little bit more, and in this case, she's spraying down instead of up. Uh, so, this is a case where, this is a North Carolina Department of Transportation roadway. This is not ours, out in, out in the county. But again, our, uh, utility lines are, are involved in some of these out in the county. Uh, Plattehall Road, and, and again, this, this one's out sort of, uh, below Highway Ten, out past Mountain Dew area. Plattehall Road water line, this one's, uh, in that same area below Fred T. Ford. A lot of washing took place in this case, and again, you can sort of see it deposited down the creek a little bit when you look off the bridge. Here's a water line. What you can't really tell in this picture is, this bank used to come around here and come up under like this. All of this was underwater, or, excuse me, under dirt. This was dug in and installed, and then it turned down and came across the creek. So, it was buried in the creek bottom, but this was all banked and stabilized. This is all washed out, and that's part of what you see downstream. This is a communication conduit that was, again, bored under, under the creek bed to, uh, to install it. So, uh, this one was leaking a little bit from the hammering it took. Crews responded to that and had it, had it back going, uh, Sunday also. It was leaking in the, in a joint here. Huffman Farm Road out, uh, just south of Mountain Dew a little bit, off one-twenty-seven. Uh, another failure from a, from a, uh, cross pipe, storm drain failure. Uh, we have a water line right here that runs through this. Uh, we have a water line right here that runs through this hole. This one's a, a little tough to see, but it's one of those time of day, sun in your eyes photo. Uh, this is actually sitting on Lake Hickory, looking at a bank in La Pointe subdivision. Uh, this is essentially private property. What you don't see in this picture is, we have a small pump station over here, serves about seven, eight, nine houses. So there's a sewer line that runs right to left across here to feed this pump station, and there's a force lane that pumps sewer back out this way. This bank sloughed off, it's pretty steep. Uh, couldn't enough, it's steep enough that you couldn't get near the edge of it. You had to put a boat in the water to go look at it from the downstream side, downhill side. There's a sewer line runs in this bank. It's not exposed yet, but again, left unintended, it will be, so. So that gives you a little bit of a flavor of what we're dealing with. This is Tate Boulevard. Uh, you see, it's sort of a box culvert that goes under Tate Boulevard right here. This, this area was a, a hole that existed. The water came in from about four different directions to it and then ran under Tate Boulevard towards the south. What this ring has done is it's washed this out, it's washed this bank, and of course, this hole is opened up all, all back in here. What we're doing in, we're setting a, we're setting a beam right here. Uh, that's a water line, twelve inch duct lining water line that we're basically gonna strap up and, and protect, and, uh, is still in service. Uh, here's a picture of our Henry, our Hickory Catawba wastewater treatment plant. This is the, the plant that we're building now, uh, in Catawba. Again, it's kind of tough to see, but, but the normal creeks right out here, sort of where that big tree looks like out there, it's the other side of that big tree. Where the dozer's sitting and the trackhoe and all that, that's construction area. And, and once this plant's done, it'll be up here at this elevation, but this is a, this is the building of it. Obviously, you can see the floodwaters in here around it. Uh, here's another view. Here's the dozers, they're sitting in the water, and the trackhoe. Uh, this is the beginning, one of the clarifiers, but again, all, all of this is flooded, the main, main creek's flooded, so that's, what some of our existing construction projects are dealing with in this area. Uh, some of you heard about, this, this one isn't ours, but you heard about a washout over CBCC. Thought I'd throw a shot of that in. This is the, uh, multipurpose building, sits right in here. Uh, washouts this area. Looking out here, as you can see, the multipurpose building, uh, water lines, uh, in here. And again, there's a storm drain that failed underneath that, that blew that out. So that's, that's a little bit of a flavor of what we're dealing with and what we're finding and what we'll continue to find. Uh, but again, we're in two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy range on some of the blocked up storm drain, box culverts, going apart. Got some brickwork done, uh, but we'll be meeting with, with the folks Friday to explain some of this to them, show them some of it. Pinecrest that we saw, uh, we're getting bids on it this week. The process that I, that I did talk about and elaborate just a little bit on, on the subdivision, Wind Ridge, we're, uh, working with an engineering firm on a proposal to do a design, uh, for that bridge replacement. And whatever option that is, uh, we'll see. But that's probably a nine to twelve month project. By the time you design it, bid it, build it, put it back in service. So that one's, that one's a few months away yet, you know, we should start on it. Chief Hall?
I'm not there.
All right.
I'll be very brief. Couple of things. We talked about the storm and how bad it was. The one thing that we really found, and we, we talked a lot about our citizens in the county, our people being resilient. What we were finding, on our calls, and we were going, that a lot of the neighbors who had water in their basements, or they had flood and, and just in the housing, we found that the neighbors that didn't have problems had, they were very fluid, we went right, helping each other. That was one of the biggest things that really hit home with me. And fortunately, or unfortunately, I, I had five inches of water in my basement when this all happened. If I hadn't had some good neighbors, because I had to wind up coming in here, if I hadn't had some good neighbors, I'd been in trouble too. So I think, really want to mention that because I think it really says a lot about our community of how they jumped in and helped each other. Another thing is too, is I think immediately that city administration knew that the emergency operations center needed to be open, and it was up very quickly, and it was unapproachable. I, I think that would have helped tremendously. On the average, and you'll see up here on, on the slide, and this is in a six hour period of time, we have fifty-nine calls for service. And, and if that's the paper time, thirty-two of them were, well, related. We average in one to two year period, we'll average maybe one or two water rescue in a one to two year period. In a six hour period, we did twelve within the city, twelve water rescues. These were out of vehicles, people that had just driven into the water and then gotten too deep. And, and I've always said, and a lot of you heard in the neighborhood college, and I'm all prepared to say that we have some very good people in Hickory, but we tend to run into one of them, motor vehicle accidents. That was another thing that was tremendous. There was a lot of, there was a lot of vehicle traffic on, on that side, which, uh, are quite a few some accidents that we had. We have a lot of power lines down. The hazards materials calls, we've been talking about. A lot of the propane tanks, we had some gas line tanks that had, was actually full in creeks in, in the streets. And then we had a lot of this absolute service calls where we had to go out and check on some of the seniors uh, because they, they were having problems in one region or another, and we did a lot of that. But in a six hour period, we had fifty-nine calls. Now, in the eight hour period after that, we, we processed another fifty-two calls, but they were all service related. We here had checked in on the seniors, a lot of water in basements and that kind of thing that, that we, that we had been. This slide is right here, depicts one of the water rescues, and this was at Valley Hills Mall, the parking lot. And we can see now, that's down there close to Belks, at the parking deck. That's where that, she drove in and just absolutely took the car, and she was in a bad light. And we actually had to go in there and do just that, get her out of there. Usually during a thunderstorm, uh, we, we do have a, more of a demand for service, uh, just with a ton of them are called, usually the likely and that kind of thing. This had, really didn't have, we didn't have to deal with that, it was just water. Tremendous amount of water seemed to be everywhere. And, and I think that, that was it. We were getting water coming in, in homes, power lines. And, and one of the things that we had to deal with personally too, we had a fire station taking on water. Took on quite a bit of water. Our station won downtown, so in all of this, we were dealing with that at the same time. Also during this, on the south side of town, we had a house structure going on fire. Took about an hour and a half during this six hour period to actually extinguish that, find them help, get them a place to stay because it still was pouring down rain, and that took time, and this all went down. So it took, it took quite a bit of time to, to really help the people and get them, get them the help that they needed at that time. And just making sure that some of the residents were okay, because we had, we had a list of backlog of calls, people that, that had water in their basements, water in their homes, and it just took us a while to get there. And they were very patient. We didn't move anybody that was out, out at all. Everybody was very patient. I think they knew that everybody in the brother was busy, the neighbors were helping. It was a tremendous effort by everybody.
It's gonna help us a little bit this afternoon on a Saturday morning too.
That's true, that's true. It's gonna help us with traffic more than anything in the world. Uh, and, and too, during all of this, normally on a Saturday morning, just to give you an idea of the fifty-nine calls in that six hour period, and we had fifty-two calls in eight hours preceding that, just to give you an idea, in that particular time on a Saturday with nothing going on, you're looking at probably eight or nine calls in that period of time for a Saturday, usually anywhere from eight to nine would be the average for that, say, eighteen hour period. And that tells us everything. And you know, that, that was the, that was the odd part too, was here we were, we were trying to get out there and help everybody else. We were running into the same thing everybody was too. There was holes that were coming, uh, the potholes, the holes on the side of the road, the flooding, the, the creeks were out of the back. We had bridges that we couldn't get across, we had roads we couldn't get in. Suddenly, we had to literally cut ourselves, we'd cut trees out of the way to get in. So it was, uh, it was tremendous effort, I think, of police, fire, and public services. And I, and I use them as our first responders. That's why when I say that, I really mean that. We have made contact all at once. Uh, we, we made contact with all of the residents that we land calls on Saturday except for one. Uh, she is living with her, we found out finally today, she's with her sister in Virginia, so we, we know she's okay. We made, went back and made contact with all the people that we dealt with and said to make sure that they had the help that they needed. And they knew where to file, and they get that, but. Here again, I, I think the city's approach to the emergency operations center was probably one of the best news that we made, or well, absolutely. Because I think it served, it's, it served several things. First off, it was, we were able to gather the information because we were all sitting right there. All the calls were coming in, different groups, we were able to put them together and, and actually add them up, and we knew where everything was at any time. It also gave us an opportunity to get the word out, but factual, factual word out to all the public. So I, I think it helped us tremendously. Third thing, you know, Karen really hit on this. It, it kept us totally involved, I would say, in municipal. And, and helped us on the state of emergency, when to do it, how to do it, and so that we followed all of the rules to where we far to be able to, well, publicly for funding and some help. So I think that, that was just tremendous, that call there. We're going to try our best to review our total process, to make sure that how we handle this approach, going back to our emergency operation plan or reviewing it, to make sure it, 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 we learned out of all of this. So I think that we'll do that during this period of time. With that, I, I think it's one of the things, is just to say thank you to the community center for helping us do our job. I think it was tremendous in that. And I would be glad to answer any questions upon that.
Have you all heard that story, Doc?
Thank you very much.
I have a question for Mr. Fran.
Are you, I'm sorry. I'm on the, oh, wait. And one thing I thought of on the chief, the other, the other thing that I think helped with the traffic issue, and, and again, it sort of started as a rainy Saturday morning and it grew worse from there, is we counted down a call to everybody, that, you know, don't be out unless you really have to. And, uh, I think that helped us as, as the day went on also. So that was, again, using, using technology, uh, a little to, to help us out. These are a, a few little, and somebody else inserted these slides on me, so, uh, I'll, I'll let you read them. But again, a few thank yous, uh, for, for the, for the staff, if you will. One of, the, the bottom one is, is from one of, one of the ladies in Wind Ridge subdivision. Uh, couldn't believe how, how quick things went back together for them, and, uh, we appreciate that. This one is, uh, really, uh, should be turned around in a sense of Karen, to be honest with you, because she's, she's, uh, been a, a go-to resource for all of, not just City Hickory, but all of municipality and the county. And like I promised you, we're gonna jump all around just a little bit in this presentation. I'm gonna go back to a timeline here just a little bit. On Sunday, we said, okay, let's sort of continue to close the loop up a little bit, and you know, it was a nice, pretty sunny day. Uh, we came in at two, four and evaluated situations, see where, see what had changed, uh, in, you know, almost the last twenty hours since we've, we've been there, listened to the reports from, from departments, and, uh, put together an update from council as well, as well as the media. And then, uh, twenty-nine and thirty, let the citizens know, uh, some of the information, we'll have a report, some of this, this damage information. Again, that's sort of, in, in working with, with Catawba County on, on some of that information. Uh, July thirty-first, uh, when the Governor Freud came in, brought him, uh, guests was able to meet with him at down at Lincoln Airport, and all of a sudden, staff, uh, got a chance to hear what some of our issues were, and, and you know, we do, we do need some help, it's that bad. So there's a little face-to-face time and, 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 uh, state of emergency was actually terminated. You'll have to remember, but they were calling for a pretty decent rain event to come in after this one, and thank goodness it, we had a little bit of rain, but it wasn't what they called for. So, uh, from that standpoint, uh, August first, we terminated the state of emergency. And again, here, here we are today, continuing to work on finding issues and scheduling work prioritizing, and, uh, working on what we've already found. That's all I got. No, no questions?
What, what I was thinking, uh, due to this, we know now where our weakest points were, obviously by the damage that was done. And my question is, uh, related to those infrastructures and those weakest points, when we put those back, do we put those back the same way that they were, or do we put them back differently now knowing that this could happen, that it happened in that location before, and that if we have another incident associated with that, if they're prone, I, I would imagine that they're prone to the same thing again. So my question is, do we put them back differently, or do we put them back the same as they were?
The answer, that's probably both. Uh, and the reason being, in some cases, uh, some of what our problems stem from was, you're not gonna put a system in to handle that kind of water. You, you don't design it for a thousand year storm. You can't afford to design for a hundred year storm, I mean, it's, in, in most cases, many pipes are constructed under roadways for a twenty-five year storm. That's sort of the norm. Uh, if floods a little bit, you let it go down, you deal with it. In this case, it was, it was so, so far out of proportion in terms of the rain we've gotten that year amount of time, you're, you're not gonna put a system out there that'll handle it. The other compound on the fact that was, is you have this debris washing down and clogging things up. You, you really can't, can't do much with that in, in this situation. But, but trying to answer your question, a lot of this will go back in, virtually about the same sizes that it was. Uh, and if you get this kind of storm, it, it may do this again. But part of it has to do with, uh, for example, uh, Wind Ridge, we may not replace that with a twenty-foot culvert, if you will. That may go in as a bridge, and that's, that's some of the evaluation we'll do, uh, through this. So trying to answer your question, it's probably some of both, where, where it makes sense and, and you can do that, uh, in the long term, to put something, uh, in that'll withstand a little bit of this type of storm scenario, and you know, we're gonna do that at the same standpoint. When you start changing the sizes of things, upstream and downstream usually have comments about that. So we, we gotta be cognizant of what, what that really does to the rest of the, of the, uh, the flow scenario. Obviously, we're not gonna downsize anything, uh, but when in some cases, there may be a little, little upside. In some cases, you can't do it because, like the one in Catawba, or in Pinecrest, Top of Springs, you saw sewer lines and other conflicts that we gotta sneak between. And so that, that, that size pits and everything else will build around it, so you can't really upsize that because of other constraints that you have there. No questions?
Good job, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, uh, the question that I also want to add, and it's correct, was the, she was the go-to person to make sure all of this stuff carried off together. Mr. Bird is gonna laugh here. Did I say that?
You did.
Because we thought about it, he was gonna laugh here, and we couldn't hear of it. And the only person that had any, any bad word for him was his wife, who was asking him out their basement. But that's the way we wanna do it. We want to be set up so that if something happens, I was, I was not able to be there to meet the governor. Yes, and great. So, uh, I, I'm happy with the way things went up at the service side. It was a difficult time, and, uh, Mr. Bird, you had a really good day here. Mr. Hill?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Are you gonna make a question?
Uh, we improve, uh, Mr. Governor's speech.
Motion by Mr. Stevens, all the favoritists say aye, all the ladies and gentlemen, motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. I'd like to thank these people for going before me because they made the perfect example of why you should keep Grace House. Imagine yourself homeless, out in the tent during this type of weather. Imagine yourself homeless, out in the tent during this type of weather. Grace House is the only place that you can go to wash your clothes and take a bath, and dry everything that you have. If you close down Grace House, these people have no place to go. And another thing, if you close down Grace House, right now their needs are being met through Rogers program and my helping with the, with the veterans, through the American Legion and the DAV. We work with them, we've got two good, two veterans going to school now, starting 15th this month, one's taking electrical courses and one's taking welding. I got a marine and his wife out of the tent, moved us to Sawmill in the other park, so they're out of the woods, thank God for that. Now, what I'd like to say is that if it wasn't for Grace House, these people would have nowhere to go. They would not. And they would, their needs would not be met if it wasn't for that. You would have high crime rate, your police would be busy, because they would meet their own needs. They would break into people's houses and get what they need. They would steal, they would kill to get what they need. By Grace House being there, we can provide their needs. And I think that you ought to think about that before you decide to close Grace House, if you, if that's only a joke, which I do not know. And I want to read you the Pledge of Allegiance. It's a lot of you say the Pledge of Allegiance and don't even know what it means. The Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance, I promise to be true to the flag, to the symbol of our country, of the United States of America, each state that has joined to make our country, and to the republic. A republic is a country where the people choose others to make laws for them. The government is for the people, for which it stands, the flag means the country. One nation, a single country, under God, the people believe in a supreme being, indivisible, the country cannot be divided into parts, with liberty and justice, with freedom and fairness, for all, for each person in the country, and that means the homeless as well. I want to thank you for listening to me, and also have two books I go by. Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States, and the Holy Bible. Jesus Christ, when he was on earth, I don't know, most of you know this, but he was homeless. He had nowhere to lay his head. And he said that, "As you do this to these, the least of my brothers, you do it unto me." So, if you close down Grace House, you're closing it down to Jesus Christ, because we believe that he said, "Where one, or two, or three are gathered together, there I am also." And that Grace House, we gather in the name of Jesus Christ, so there he is. And he said, "What you do to the least of them, my brothers, you do it unto me." Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Senator Kimpf, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wood?
Tonight, we do have our quarterly finance report for the last quarter of FY 12-13. These are, what I'm going to go over and show you tonight, are un-audited numbers, and actually somewhat incomplete, because we continue to pay invoices that come in in late June into July, we pull them back into June. We also continue to collect sales tax revenue in July and August. So, this report will be absent those items, but other than that, you can get a pretty good picture of how we did in both the general fund and the water and sewer fund, of course, of the last, last year. We will have the annual audit meeting later in the fall, there. We will start taking a look at the, the general fund, how we've done with 100% of the year complete. The general fund is a $45 million fund, about 50% of your overall budget. We've received just over 89% of our budget of revenues, and the five-year average says it'll be at 93%. There's a reason for that difference. If you recall, when we adopted the FY 12-13 budget, you appropriated $2.5 million in fund balance to put towards capital reserve to meet our five-year CIP needs. And what's happening is, the way the accounting system works, that actually works against us on revenues, on revenue side, and I'll show you the bottom line, I'll clean it all up for you on a more apples-to-apples comparison on the bottom line, but when you take that anomaly out, we're really where we need to be in terms of what our five-year average says. On the expenditure side, we have spent or encumbered almost 95% of our budgeted expenditures. Our five-year average says it'll be at about 93%, 5%. And looking at the bottom line, what all that means, when you look at our revenue over expenditures, we have actually spent about a half a million dollars more than collected, and our five-year average says it'll be at about $200,000 more, more, more revenue collected than expended. Again, going back to that $2.5 million number, I know I'm getting a lot of the weeds here, but when you, when you look at a more apples-to-apples comparison, we're probably a million dollars to the good, which is comparable to where we were at this point last year, if that makes sense. So, so in essence, even further bottom line, your goal is to have a 25% fund balance, and ideally put a little bit of money back into fund balance every year. FY 11-12, which is very similar to this year, we put about $300,000 back into fund balance, that would be a good target number for what we're probably looking at, if that makes sense, that's the bottom line. And we would maintain our 25% fund balance goal in the general fund. Any questions so far? Okay. Just some general fund highlights, since we've completed the year for FY 12-13. Again, we did set aside money to continue funding our five-year CIP for the next few years. We offered a retirement incentives program this past year, we had 34 takers, we did it two years ago, we had 20 folks that accepted the altering. Again, this is a goal to try to control costs, and we felt like that was effective. The hiring freeze continued, although it's, it's more targeted now than across the board. And at any given time, we probably have the 20, 30, and 35 vacancies in the city. Revenue collections were stable for the second year in a row, and that's a good, that's a good thing, because we couldn't say that a few years ago. And really, two really good pieces of information. We experienced two years of decline in our tax base, well, this year, it grew, it grew slightly, but we avoided our third decline in tax base. And that was mostly due to an increase in our business personal property, more so than on the real property side, but nonetheless, our tax base decreased slightly. And in addition to that, our property tax collection rate increased for the first time in about 10 years. And I'll show you a slide, this is our property tax collection rate going back to 2002, 2003, and you can see, it's just a fairly slight decline, and then we hit the most recent recession, and it continued to decline, and it really dropped off last year. This is the first measurable increase we've had in this span. So, that's a, that's a good sign. If we could put two or three years together of our collection rate increasing, we think that would be a, a good, a good, a good sign for us. Every tenth of a percent that our collection rate drops, we lose $25,000 in current year collections. So, that's a significant number. Moving to the water and sewer fund. Water and sewer fund is a $23 million fund, and it makes up about 25% of your overall budget. We'll take a look at how, how they're doing this year. Little bit different story in the water and sewer fund, with 100% of the year complete, they've collected 98.5%. Again, there were some revenues that will be collected, but that were collected in July that are reflected here. The five-year average says it'll be at about 93%, so they did, they did better on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, spent or encumbered 88% of the budgeted expenditures, the five-year average says it'll be about 92%. So, Kevin's done, done a good job of holding the line on the expenditure side of the water and sewer fund. And what that means for their bottom line, Kevin won't like this part, because I'm going to explain this number away. The revenues over expenditures in the water and sewer fund, just straight math, says they've collected $3.8 million more than they spent. The five-year average, the five-year average says that they ought to be at $611,000. The reason this number is so high, three, three factors figured into that. Number one, they had a tremendous amount of capital projects that were begun in the previous fiscal year that weren't complete, that would roll over into the new year, and that combined with, there was a debt service payment we thought was going to come through that was budgeted, that did not. And also, there were two one-time revenues that he received that were kind of inflated this number. When you back those out, they're still doing better than their five-year average, but not nearly what it says, what it says it is. So, Kevin won't like that part of it, but that's, that's where it, that's where it is in the water and sewer fund. And again, water and sewer fund had a very similar year to what it had the previous year, so, so no decline there. Just a few highlights in the water and sewer fund. We completed a northeast wastewater treatment plant last year. Began construction on the Hickory-Catoba wastewater treatment plant, Chuck can picture that, hopefully it's not underwater. We were awarded a $2.9 million grant from the state of North Carolina to install public sewer in three neighborhoods in northeast Hickory, which are in our ETJ. And there's no match on the city's part, this is all strictly grant money, so that'll be, that'll start in this current, correct this to the year that we're in. We replaced 3,000 feet of 80-year-old water line out near J.C. Park, and it's kind of went under the radar spring to some degree. We received an area-wide optimization award for being in the top 10 percentile of North Carolina for cleanliness of finished drinking water. So, we have some of the cleanest drinking water produced by the water plant in the state of North Carolina, we're seeing one for it. And however, we like for our water sales to grow, obviously incrementally, every year, our year-over-year water sales were flat. A lot of conservation going on in, particularly on the residential side. Just to give you an idea, Chuck talked a lot about particularly not only roadway damage, but utility damage. The total value of our utility system, not our, not the net assets, the total value of the assets is $130 million. So, it's a tremendous amount of investment out there in our utility system, and obviously they're very capital-intensive in terms of replacing and maintaining, spend a disproportionate amount of their budget on, on capital side as compared to the, as compared to the general fund. Okay, we'll switch gears a little bit here. This is our total building permit values issued by fiscal year going back to '04, '05. I always have to explain this away. This, in FY '09, '10, Catapa Valley Medical Center got a $30 million building permit for renovations. When you, when you take that out, it was really, which is non-taxable property, it was really about $50 million a year for us. This is a pretty amazing slide, when you, when you take that $30 million permit out. This, I would say this is, this is our floor in terms of building permit. We've been at about $50 million for five years. So, I'd say $50 million is about the floor. We, we like for this number to be 75 million, if not 100 million, where we were up here, to really get some growth in our tax base, we talk about that a lot. This is, you know, this is a year-end number, and we ended up at almost 49 million, so that just kind of gives you an idea, we've been very consistent in our, in our permitting, in our tax base in terms of permits issued for, for projects. Interestingly, but I will say, July was a $16 million month. Three of those equals what we did the whole, the whole year, so I think 12 million of that is what might be, but we had a good month in, in July, hopefully that'll be the start of more good months. And just finally, the impact of state tax reform, we talked about that a lot, we were very concerned about what we saw going on in Raleigh. Here's the bottom line on what is going to come out of that and what it means to us. We're going to receive half of our whole harmless revenue from the state, and this will be a loss of about $130,000. It was scheduled to drop off last year, we knew that. We hope, we, we hope that they would continue to, there's a long history to our whole harmless revenue, we had hoped that they'd continue to, to give us those funds, but this current year will be the last year, we're only going to get half of what, of what we should be getting, or had hoped to get. And so, that'll be about $130,000 hit to us, that's the worst news in this issue. Utility franchise taxes are going to be eliminated, but included in the sales tax base. So, the calculation is, we're going to be pretty much, even though they're eliminating the franchise tax, utility franchise taxes, we'll make up for it in, through the sales tax base. So, that was kind of a wash. We were very concerned about the state doing away with local government's ability to have privilege licenses, and there, there's no change to the privilege license system in the state. Additionally, we were concerned about our ability to get our, our tax refunds on local government side, and they are not going to tamper with that. And finally, the league did a calculation on the impact of all the cities to the, to the state tax reform, and really, it's a, it's a positive, about $113,000 figuring the whole harmless, and it's, it's pretty much a wash. Now, I will say, what the Senate had been considering was going to be millions of dollars in revenue lost to us, so that really the House didn't go along with that, and when they got together, this is what came out of it. So, we did very well not to get hit by the state tax.
Most of that loss, they were projecting that most of that loss would be offset by the consumption tax.
Right.
But we didn't have any idea what that number would be, because it would be like passive, and then we'll find out what it doesn't.
Correct. And they did not end up broadening the base like the Senate wanted to do, and they didn't lower the income tax rate as much as what the Senate wanted, so that was the final one that. Any questions?
I have one, but it's not directly related to that. I'm just curious, if you could briefly speak to the financial impact related to the flood and all the events that went on, and how, I guess, real brief scenario of what happened, where those claims come from? If the state, regardless of what they do, what's our next step financially?
I'll start with, I'll go back a little further than that. We have set up, I'll give you in the weeds here, we've set up specific account codes to track all these expenditures. And we will be coming back to you, if not the next meeting, the meeting after that, with budget amendments to put funds into those line items, make sure we've, we've got money to cover. We didn't want to, we didn't, we wanted to make sure we had a good idea of what the numbers were before we did that, so that's why we're waiting a little bit. I know Conner went ahead and did some of that. Ultimately, we think the scenario that we're going to be in is that we will be able to get 75% reimbursement for our costs related to the damage, certainly from the state. And potentially, the state may get some federal money, but we, we think 75% is going to be where we are, so 25% would be our share. So, I don't know what the number's going to be, but, you know, it's, it's, we'll be on the hook for 25%. That's why it's important for us to get that, that level one rating done, so we can qualify for that. And again, this, this is a perfect exercise in why having a healthy fund balance is so important. If this would have been a very isolated incident, and it's still been, you know, a couple million dollars of damage, that would be probably all in us. So, this, this is one of the reasons why we always preach a healthy fund balance. And now we're on the, on the verge of hurricane season, and we'll have ice storms and wind messes, so it's always, there's always something working out there that we have the financial resources to be prepared for.
What is our fund?
That's 11.6 million in the general fund. And that's about 25% of the, of operational, the general fund.
We still have some other funds for fuel and some other?
Yes. Yeah, there are, there are a few other pots of money, but that's, that's the, that's the.
Is there a big change on the way the sales tax is going to be collected, restricted, or? I think there's talk of that, I don't know.
No, I think all that's going to be pretty much as is, with the exception of the utility franchise tax, of utilities, your natural gas, your power, being taxed on a sales tax basis versus a franchise tax, so it'll be 70, 70% tax like everything is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any appointments?
I have a report for Lisa, multiple community council.
I'd like to appoint Todd Hefner, the Public Affairs Commissioner. Any other?
I'm going to be approved in the first.
Okay. All the things that we say aye. All of those, both. Lots of you madness, have you madness? Any, any petitions, requests, matter finding, general comments?
I'm bringing up, I was saying, planning to put in a grant program, and it was very interesting, it was in history, I thought what grant bills are, and type it with your own. Another round of grant money that helps revitalize areas, and it's, I think it's one of the best programs that we've been involved in, we've seen a success of it with the Hall of Cross and other places. it with the Hall of Cross and other places becoming.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recognize Thomas McBrer. Want to stand up for a second? With the June O'Leary of Hickory High, and he must have done something to really upset his father because he had been an internship for two weeks with the city. So we'll see if his mowing skills improve after this, or how.
Okay. Would you be adjourned? Have a time to say aye? You're adjourned, thank you for doing your.